I'd like to say welcome tonight. This is again special meeting for the, for the budget for 2016. Tonight we're going to be starting with Chief Trexel for the Burlington Fire Department.
All right, good afternoon. I guess first thing, I wish I could say I've been working on this for like three weeks or something. But really, I started on Monday. If you follow the newspaper, we were super busy on Monday. But I think I got pretty much polished up about an hour ago. So I'll do my best. Really what you're gonna see in here is what we try to do to make Burlington a great place to live, work and play, and also a safer, or a safer place to live, work and play. So I'm gonna go through the, the numbers and then I'm also gonna talk a little bit about what we actually do. What's that?
On the side, on the left side is it on?
Thank you.
Press the button that clicks, Chief.
It worked. It's just slow.
All right. So these are the things that we're gonna talk about. I'm gonna go back to 2015. That's the last year that we actually have a complete budget in the books to look at. We can go over this year's proposed budget as a broad topic and then kind of delve into the different areas, the ones that are bigger budget items like the ambulance, fire control, fire prevention and our, go over our capital. It did it? Okay. I'll click a couple minutes before I, I'm gonna be sorry that I put these swipes in here for the stuff because they get way behind me. So looking back to FY15, the year we just finished up, you know, kind of see where we were at in 15. I think if you look at our budget, 15 was a great year. I'm not sure 17's gonna be as great, but we're shooting for that. So our approved budget in 27, or in 15 was about 4.6 million. And you look there and say, we actually spent 4.7. How, that wasn't a great year. Well, that was the year we added the three safer funded positions. So most of that year we had two or three people that were not in our budget. So to come in about 100,000 over our budget was, was pretty good considering we added staffing. But in another great part, we had really good revenue last year, 1.6 million. Of that 220,000 was the safer funding.
How much, how much?
About 220,000 for safer funding. So the net cost of the city was about 3 million and 92,000 dollars, which I'll just go ahead and click here forward. You have to go back to about 300 less than the year before. And you have to go all the way back to FY11 to have a net cost of the city of less than that. So about a four-year time span, we're almost back to where we were. Again, I think last year was an extraordinary year. The majority of that revenue rests on the EMS budget, on the ambulance budget. We had a really great year. The ambulance billing itself, what we billed for that year was just over 1 million. And then there's some stuff we, we get paid from the CTA A. That year was about $61,000. We had 66,000 in bad debt recovery. Every year we get about 110,000 from the quad township.
Do you want to say what the CTA A is and how that works?
The combined township, the Ambulance Association. And what they're doing is they're paying a percent of, we add up not only this ambulance budget, but then we include a part of, I believe the deputy chief Dana and a battalion chief are figured in there and then some utility costs. And then we subtract our revenue for the year. And then they pay a portion of the, if we lose money, which when you add all that stuff in there, it's gonna look like we're, we're losing money. So they pay a portion of, whatever the percentage is.
They pay a percentage based off of the calls for service that occur in their areas. And it works out to about 16, 17 percent, somewhere in that neighborhood.
So that year was 61 percent. Now this, or $61,000, well, we just gave them a bill for the, the next year and it was actually lower than that because we, we had such a good year on revenue, they actually paid less.
Some more like 20? 31,000?
And then, yes.
Oh, yes, so like 21,000 for...
They paid 10,000 towards capital and I believe that's going up 2 percent per year.
It goes up?
Regardless, on the capital.
A portion, yeah, it goes up 2 percent a year. Is that right? But yeah, they, they pay their percentage, whatever our net cost for operations with the ambulances. And it's, it's a, we started that contract two years ago under that methodology for reimbursement. We've had a longstanding arrangement though with them for them paying a portion of our costs for quite a, quite a period of time though.
Some other revenue, we had countywide hazmat, 48,000 a year. We started that new billing for motor vehicle accidents. There's about $8,000 between that and hazmat. Like hazmat on a scene, like picking up fluids and stuff. About 11,000 for fire permits. And then there was $27,000 we got from FEMA for overtime. And that was for reimbursement that we paid out of our budget for the bird flu response. So for the bird flu response, we, we paid $27,000 in overtime to the guys to cover them, the people that were gone. And FEMA reimbursed us dollar for dollar on everything that we spent.
We got it, we got it, Steve.
On the, on the FEMA repaid money, is there a, is there a max or a, on that? I mean...
On the, the overtime for the bird flu?
Well, for, for any time that you guys have to use, use any of our guys, is there a cap on that or?
Not in this case, there wasn't. They would've taken however many people we would send them.
This, this is the first time I've seen something like this occur. We haven't had an extraordinary incident on a statewide basis like this for some time. But yeah, anytime that we put towards helping with the, the costs associated with cleanup, dealing with the contamination issues that they were trying to address, they made sure that we fully, we were fully reimbursed for our time up there.
So they paid us the 27,000 for overtime. And there was other money that didn't come out of my fire budget that was reimbursed, hotels, meals and stuff like that, that I believe the net coded those to a different department. So that's not included in my revenue. And then there was $19,000 around in there we get for confined space contracts as well. So moving ahead to this year's proposed budget. There it is, $4,861,000. FY16 was $4,836,000. It's just up less than 1 percent, but that is including one less person than we currently have on duty. So we, we're finishing out our safer grant come the beginning of June. One person we know is retiring. He has to retire the first week in June, so he won't be replaced. So he's not included in this budget. And then through attrition, we'll get rid of the other safer funded firefighter. So I'll show you our shift strength here in a minute. We currently have one shift of 13 and then 14 and 14. And then when the safer grant winds down, we'll go back to 13, 13 and 13. So this, this funding would be enough to have two shifts of 13 and one of 14. However, I, I have confirmed that the 14th guy on the one shift is, is leaving our department come sometime in June or early July. He's going to med school in Des Moines. So one guy's retiring, one guy's going to med school. So we should be okay. The next thing I have on here is the projected revenue. And I would just say I, I didn't figure this out. I think Jim did the revenue figures. And I think he's conservative, which is great. I mean, we didn't, we didn't base it off of how well we did in 2015 necessarily. But it's a, it's a decent target for us. I click ahead here. But we're anticipating revenue of one point, almost 1.3 million dollars. And then our net cost in 2017 should be right around 3.5 million when it catches up here. Again, there's our proposed budget for this year as compared to the last three fiscal years. 14 and 15 have the actual dollar amounts. 16 is what we have budgeted. I made this graph and then I looked at it and said, I don't like this. It looks like we really increased our spending. It's from one end to the other, it's about $200,000 difference. So yeah, it, it has went up, there's no doubt. We're somewhere less than 2 percent per year if you go from FY14 to 17. So... And breaking that down into just the personnel costs, take out all the other station maintenance, training and all that kind of stuff, our personnel budget is about 90 percent of our, of the cost of the fire department. I think that's common for full-time fire departments to be right around that 90 percent. And again, okay, this is where we're at currently with our staffing. Like I said, we got two shifts of 13, actually, or two shifts of 14, the one has a vacancy that we're gonna fill come sometime in February or March. We're holding the testing early February, but we have to replace that per the safer requirements. It doesn't actually run out until I believe June 7th. So we have to maintain a staffing of 41, what they call line firefighters until then. And then we can drop back to 39 after that. We just recently had someone resign from the department. So that's why we're doing testing next month. We also have, you know, we have the deputy chief, fire marshal, we have a battalion chief on each shift. We have a captain on every shift and then one shift has two captains. Because we're waiting to, to replace him with a lieutenant whenever a captain would move up or retire. So eventually the staffing will be a battalion chief, a captain, a lieutenant, and then 10 firefighter paramedics on each shift for a total of 13. That's going really good now. So again, our, our core services that we provide, emergency medical services, that EMS calls are about 80 percent of our call volume. And that's, that's true for departments whether we run an ambulance service or not. About 80 percent of your calls are gonna be related to EMS. Fire suppression, fire prevention, fire investigation, hazardous material response, one more. And then the technical rescues that, like all the other things that you can think of, ice rescue, trench rescue, confined space, all kinds of different rescue things that we have to be prepared for and trained for. Luckily, we don't do them very often. The next slide is a, is just a picture of what we, where we respond and what our areas are. Did I go ahead, Eric? Do you know? I hate to click and, okay. So the first new fire coverage area that we cover is all the stuff in red on that map. And that includes the four townships immediately surrounding Burlington. If you add up the square miles, that's 111 square miles. And I believe Burlington itself is like 13 square miles. So we've added a huge territory and about 5,000 people, population that we cover with the fire department. The ambulance is even, it's even bigger than that. You add on all the blue areas plus a little slice of Illinois where Gulfport is, we're primary ambulance for that territory. And then the rest of Henderson County, we, we cover that as needed for advanced life support. But our primary ambulance area is 199 square miles and it covers 36,521 people. That's, that's the people that live in Des Moines County. So when you look at the population as a whole, Des Moines County is about just a little over 40,000. We have a huge part of that population that we cover for ambulance service. And that's kind of a rarity for, for a fire department to cover rural townships, a career city department. That, there's no other departments I know that are doing that. A lot of them that run ambulances are reaching out into the county and the neighboring territory to provide that service.
Do we have any type of cushion funding or, or funding that covers the, the miles when you, when you're covering territory that far?
Well, the CTA A, the combined township ambulance association, that's what that money is for. That's the, the townships around Burlington, Danville, West Burlington. For the ambulance, for the fire, that's the 110,000 we get from the quad townships is what we, we get for covering that area. And it's, it's 5,000 people, but it's a huge, it's a huge territory, you know? Square mileage wise, close to 100 square miles, but not very populated, not a whole lot of calls out in the county. So... Moving ahead to the ambulance budget for this next year. Proposed budget is 1.3 million. The revenue, this is just for the, the ambulance billing portion, what we're billing out and getting that same year for billing, 1,078,000. So the net cost of the, the ambulance should be around $232,000 for fiscal year 17. So for $232,000, let's go ahead and advance this forward. When we talk about the ambulance service and it's losing money, so the cost to city, $232,000 to run an ambulance service, net, that's what we're paying. Hopefully it goes forward here in a minute. Above for that, we get 12 paramedics or four per shift. So every day we have four more people per shift than we would have if we didn't. So for 12 people divided into 232,000, that's a bargain if you do it on a per person basis. But the best thing about that is when we do run fire calls, hopefully, a lot of times those guys are available. Say for instance, on Monday, we had a house fire. There was one ambulance out, but we still had two more people. So we had eight, eight people able to respond to a house fire up from our own department. A lot of these departments that don't run an ambulance, they're looking at six people on a shift. So that's somewhere where we would be without running an ambulance. So we're looking good. A lot of times we'll respond with 10 or more to a fire. The other thing we get, I'm getting ahead of myself now, we get experienced, dependable, reliable EMS response for our city and a great portion of Des Moines County. Last year we had 3,698 EMS calls. So our guys are running, I say guys, guys and gal, we have one gal, running a lot of EMS calls. They're getting a lot of experience being medics. And just recently I started doing the, what we call quality control audits of the reports. So I'm reading through their EMS reports, seeing what they're doing on scenes. And I read them and I go, wow, this is way different than why I used to ride on, ride out on an ambulance, you know, 10 years ago. What they're doing today is totally different. They're going to school. We have some guys in the paramedic class now. It's full-time. It's full-time fall, spring and then summer before they can even take a test to be a paramedic. Before that, they're in the EMT class for a full semester, seven credit hours. So just to get through the EMS program, they're 45 hours into college. So our people are starting with that, which is great. And a lot of them come on with their fire certifications already, which is great. And I listened to Doug talk about how long it takes to get a police officer. And I'm just thinking, I'm so glad that we don't have to do that. Truthfully, a lot of the people we get when they're paramedics, it takes about two days of training. And we're using them in some capacity on the fire department. About six months out, they're doing everything, just like everybody else. They're able to do all the jobs that we do. We're very fortunate in that we, the one limit of that is we have a very limited hiring pool. We're doing a test, first part of February, and I think there's around 20 to 25 applicants. Only four of those are paramedics. So those are, that's really our pool is four people to choose from. The next thing there is excellent response times. If you live in the city of Burlington, you're not gonna wait more than about five minutes on an average for an ambulance. That's from the time that we get the call to, well, when we show up at your door. And that's just great. And I fact, we, when I run the time, I have to factor in areas that it's not possible to drive there in five minutes, like the Lenox Park area, the care center's out off West Avenue. Just get in your car and drive there, it's gonna take you at least five minutes. So those are, it's impossible, you know, to, to average less than that. We're always figuring those in. And also I'm including, since we started EMD, we're running a lot of our calls without lights and sirens. So that, that time's figured in there, five and a half minutes or so, either with lights and sirens or without anywhere within the city of Burlington. And this next one kind of goes along with it. We have five ambulances. Not every day can we run five ambulances, but every day we can run four if we don't have a fire call or some other pressing issue. Those guys come off a fire engine and get on an ambulance. And it's not common to have four, but it's common to have three. That's at least a weekly occurrence that we have three or more ambulances out on the road. So very busy. Another great benefit that we get is every time we go to a call, we have a paramedic there. And we, normally we have an ambulance. It doesn't matter if we're going on a CO, a carbon monoxide call, a car wreck, a brush fire, there's gonna be paramedics on the scene. So we never have to call somebody else for EMS care. We, we have that covered.
We've got a superior fire department. We really do. I, I...
I mean, I think so. Of course I do.
I think so too.
I think it's a great model, fire-based EMS. I'm, I'm sold on that. Our ambulance budget, the, the $232,000 that we pay for ambulance, it also covers a lot of other things. It helps pay for the stuff at the stations. It covers EMS training, which we're gonna have to pay for that whether we have an ambulance service or not. It pays for equipment, EMS equipment that we're gonna have, whether we have an ambulance service or not. Also the training, sorry.
The supplies that you use in the process of responding, do you have to go to the hospital replenish or do you have your own system?
Most of them we replenish at the hospital. They are great to work with. We have sheets there. Most of the stuff that we, I don't mean like sheets, I mean paper sheets that have a, it's like a billing form. So whenever we use a disposable item, bandages, IV fluids, IV tubing, we just write it down there and then at the end of the month, they send us a bill for everything that, that we use. There's some things that they don't stock that we have to purchase ourselves, but most of it they have. And when I, I used to be the EMS officer for our department and I went out all over trying to find better prices on everything. You can't beat the prices at Great River. They don't mark them up for us. I mean, the other day I can't remember, they had like three or four sets or 11 nasal cannulas. It was like 11 cents a piece. And I thought, I don't know, they paid somebody to figure out how much it costs, you know, a dollar for all this stuff that we, that we ordered, you know? And it's, it's a great deal for us. So we run out there, we drop our patient off, we restock the ambulances. They're ready to go normally right from there. And one other, one other thing, and I don't know this to be 100 percent true, but other revenue streams are open to us because we do have staffing of at least 10 on duty. When we're talking about the quad township, if we were a fire department of six, I think they would probably think twice, do they want Burlington to cover them for fire if they only have six people that can respond to a fire? Now we have 10 or more. So I think that really helps. Same with the airport. We get about, I forgot to mention that on revenue, $9,500 a year they pay us to provide airport coverage. And then same thing with hazmat. Down in Lee County, there's two smaller fire departments. They have to team up in order to have a hazmat team to cover the entire county. Because six people on duty in a fire department that small really isn't enough people to form a good hazmat team. Any questions, feel free to interrupt me here. I've already clicked ahead. So what I'm gonna do next is, is talk about the staffing comparison. It was in last week's Thursday packet. And in there it had an average firefighter staffing, you know, how many per thousand does the average fire department have between populations of 20 and 30,000 people? And the average was right at 1.17. If you just look at that and then you look at the next line and you see, well Burlington's at 1.71, I mean, people, I think people will look at it and go, wow, we got a huge fire department comparatively speaking. Well, we run an ambulance service, which really adds to your, to your level. I'll explain the number in parentheses in a minute. But when I looked at the ambulance services or the fire departments that run an ambulance, our normal comparable cities, Muscatine, Clinton and Mason City, and figured it up, the average number of people per, firefighters per 1,000 is 1.64. So we're at 1.71. We're, we're right there. There's a caveat to that, I'll explain. If we didn't run an ambulance service and we didn't have the 12 people that it funds, our staffing would be right at 1.24. So again, we're very near the average. And those figures are based on our staffing right now today with two shifts of 14 and one of 13. Come this same time next year, if we're at three shifts of 13, we're looking at our ambulance, or our total staffing of 1.64, which would be right at the average for departments running an ambulance service. Or without the 12 funded by the ambulance, 1.16, so slightly below the average. So we're, we're right there at or below the average, depending how you figure it. Again, I talked about losing the two positions. Muscatine, one we commonly use for comparisons. They've been, always been the one that's right below everybody else. Well, they're adding, it's in their budget and it looks like it's gonna go through adding four positions for this next fiscal year, which will bring them pretty much exactly in line with our fire department, very similar to where Clinton's at in Mason City. And then one thing that's not figured in there, and I know we're the Burlington Fire Department and the citizens of Burlington are paying the general fund that's paying for the fire department. But when you look at what we actually cover, we're covering a, a huge area that some of these other departments aren't covering. So they're talking about our population of 25,000. Well, at a minimum, we're covering 30, 30,700 if you include just our fire territory and a lot more when you talk about the ambulance. The very next thing will be the fire control budget. That's our highest individual budget within the, the fire department. It has the majority of the firefighters, all of the officers are in there, all battalion chiefs, lieutenants, captains are included in there. I hate to keep clicking because I don't wanna get, go three slides ahead and have to try to go back. Okay, so there's our proposed budget for fire control. Pretty much might as well say $3 million for FY17. Our revenue there is mostly from the quad township. I did include the vehicle repairs, just something I wanna make note of. You know, this last year, we, we have budgeted about $43,000, which is, I believe somewhere around 13 or 14 for our own in-house vehicle maintenance. And then 30,000 or so for outside repairs. And we've, this year, the fiscal year we're in, we've, we've spent all that money. We're just, we're running this 95 engine first out and then about a 2,000 out at the other station. And the repair costs are, it, it's getting to be a little bit, I mean, I would consider it out of hand, but you, you have to do something. You have to have engines that run. We did order a new, a new fire engine. It should be here in April or May, which will really, really help our department. So that's a, that's a large budget item for us to absorb.
Was the, was the, were the repairs pretty much for that, for one vehicle?
Pretty much all for that one engine. Yeah. I say at least half of it. It's been towed at least twice that I know of. Out to say Hulk camps to be repaired. And this last time, last two times, we've actually taken it up to Davenport on their recommendation. The first time they did some major engine work to it. And then the second time it was just to, to fix up what they already fixed. It was a no charge. No charge for the work. I mean, we had to send somebody up there, drive it up there and bring it back when it was fixed, but...
So what kind of shape is it in now? I mean, now that we've had this work done?
It's been running good. It's been running good.
And you'll have the new truck in by?
By May. It should, it'll be here by May. Or, I'm not gonna make any promises. That's, that's what a salesman says. So... That's probably a little bit of rose tinted glasses there looking at that. So maybe it'll be a little bit later. Yeah, but that'll really help. And probably the worst thing about that, we've been very lucky when it's broke down. It hasn't been, we're not going to a house fire, going to a CPR in progress. We're coming back for a call or going to some other activity. But for me personally, it's kind of embarrassing when you see your fire truck going by being towed. $550 to go out to Hulk camp. So... Any questions about the fire control budget? The majority of that is, is personnel costs.
You have another one too that you're looking to replace?
Yeah, I can cover that in the capital, but hopefully in the 2020, FY 2020, we have another engine in there. So then we'll be designed to run like we wanna run. The way we do it now is we, if we go to the county, we jump off these trucks and get on these trucks. But what we're trying to do is design a fleet that, that you stay on that truck. This is the truck that you're using. Maybe one guy has to get off and get the tender or the large, the truck with a large amount of water. But then we'll have two newer trucks that are doing all of our responding. So that'll really make a difference. We always have to have backups. Some of these engines will be great. Put them in the back row and if you have to go get an oil change in the new truck, you bring that old one up and put it frontline. But other than that, they're, they shouldn't be running up and down the street on a regular basis. The next one is the one I, I don't like to talk about, nobody likes to talk about, but the fire department overtime budget. I put all those years in so you could see how good we're doing now, but not really. Go back, I mean, we've, when you're in emergency services, you have a minimum level of staffing. And we always have enough people to just keep us over that, over that minimum. So we have enough people that on a daily basis, we wouldn't need overtime unless you have somebody sick, somebody injured, family death, somebody that needs to go to some kind of required training. Anytime something like that happens, then we have to hire overtime to get our minimum staffing back up to the level. We had a great year in FY 15. That 89,000 was a little more than we had budgeted, but that was, that 27,000 of that was for the bird flu outbreaks. You take that off of there, we were under our budget, which that's the first time that that's happened in a long time, that we were under our overtime budget.
Can you tell me, or can you tell people listening, how come we were at 271,000 in, in 2012?
Yeah, injuries. Fire department injuries. So you were, we were right at the minimum. I think at that time we had a, a staffing of 14 and a minimum of 11. That's right when we took over the, the quad townships. And we had been running 14 people and 10 minimums. When we took over the townships, we were able to bump our minimum staffing back to 11. So that three person, that's how many people by contract can be off on vacation, comp time, holiday comp, you name it. So three people can... So three people can schedule themselves off. That leaves you no cushion. So one injury, every day that person's gone, you're hiring overtime. That's how that happens. Uh, this last year with the safer grant, when we were at fourteen staffing and a ten minimum, we always had that one person cushioned. So two people would have to be sick in order, or injured in order for you to hire overtime. So it was a rare day that we hired overtime. Like I said, twenty-seven thousand of that was for the bird flu outbreak. And also included that is our ambulance overtime. So whenever we send some, uh, an ambulance to say Iowa City or Davenport or Cedar Rapids or Ames or wherever they go, we have to replace some people on shift. Uh, that's, that's been anywhere from fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. But that, you're making that money back by taking that, that, that call to Iowa City or Davenport.
Your minimum staffing has had such an impact on that overtime, cause you're, the high number there was with the minimum staffing of eleven.
Right.
Uh, then it, we switched it down to ten, then this council demanded that it get switched to nine, minimum staffing of nine, uh, two years ago.
Yeah, right, right before we got the safer grant. We went to nine for a period of maybe five months, something like that.
Remember demanding.
Uh, you, you did. You demanded it go to that.
So then as soon as we got the safer people hired and got our staffing back to fourteen, then we went back to a ten person minimum. Which it was almost a moot point, cause most of the time we had at least ten working. Cause we had fourteen people assigned to each shift, so most of the time we had, had ten or eleven.
But as we go down, back down into this next year's budget to the thirteen per shift with that minimum staffing of ten, overtime will be a, a little bit of more of a potential issue.
What's, what's, what's the, off the top of your head, what's the cost for one, one fireman per year?
When we did the safer grant, we budgeted right around eighty thousand. That was for a new hire.
Pretty close.
A guy that's been here for a little longer, maybe, uh, more than that, but somewhere around in that range with salary, pension, contribution, healthcare.
Who's in fire prevention as an example?
Uh, just Mark.
And so Mark's as, is on the higher end.
Yeah.
But his costs are seventy-three, eighty-three, ninety-one.
Yeah, he, you, you probably picked, you picked the second highest guy on the department.
His overall costs are a hundred and fifteen thousand when you throw in all, all benefits. So the lower end is gonna be just a little over seventy thousand, I think with, depending on which health insurance package they pick.
Yeah, whether they're single or married. Is that it?
Yeah, yeah, I'm just gathering info right now.
So this year I did, where we are right at our, we're, well, we're already over what we budgeted for overtime this year with the two. We've got three people in school, we've got the vacancy on the one shift, we have an injury. Uh, so we have two shifts that are working at thirteen and, and a minimum staffing of ten with injuries and people going to school. It's, it's tough. It is very tough right now. Luckily it's January, we're coming up on February, March, when not too many people wanna take vacation, so that really helps a lot. Our fire prevention budget, it's, it's one of the smaller items within our budget. Uh, most of that is, again, that's what Jim was just saying, that's fire, the fire marshal's salary and benefits and. Uh, but there is a lot of, anything that we do for fire prevention comes out of there. We do a lot of, uh, you know, we have coloring books, hand stuff for the kids, that all comes out of Mark's budget. Uh, all the, uh, the software that we use for fire reporting, that comes out of, of, I call it Mark's budget, that's what we call it. It's his budget, he kinda oversees it. Uh, code books, every, anything that has to do with fire prevention, code enforcement, fire investigation, uh, comes out of that budget. Um, it's something that I personally am pretty passionate about. I'm trying to, you know, get, get everybody involved and do more in fire prevention. You know, if you look at where is the smart money in fire departments, it's on prevention, the more of this stuff you can prevent, the better off that your city will be. There's, there's three areas within fire prevention. They was talking about the three Es being education, number one. So anytime we can get in front of a group and do a presentation or, or kids, we, we're always talking fire safety. Um, I was hoping Bob was here, he, he missed out on a great presentation. Mark went out and gave a presentation to the, uh, the men of Sunrise West. It's a group of guys and I guess Bob was part of that, he wasn't there that day, but, uh, we do stuff like that. We'll go into, uh, different facilities, uh, assisted living and we'll help them develop emergency plans, fire escape plans, that sort of thing. Um, so that's the education side. And then the next thing is engineering, which is really about the codes, developing the codes that you're gonna need, uh, for good fire prevention codes. And we're working off of the, uh, twenty-twelve international fire code at the moment. Uh, that's up, that's changed every three years, so there's actually a twenty-fifteen code out there that we haven't adopted. And there's a good reason for that. We're trying to work with the inspections department and bring all the codes forward at the same time, cause there's some discrepancies between the fire code and the building code. So trying to work those out ahead of time, so we don't have some, something on a road that maybe the fire code says something and their code says something else, and then we kinda have an argument on, well, which code are we gonna follow? So we're trying to work those out and bring all the codes up to date at the same time. Uh, then the last part of the three Es is enforcement. And that has to really do with inspections. Uh, if you know Mark, he's very busy doing inspections. He's a great inspector. I love to go out with him and, and see the kind of things. He sees stuff that I was like, I would never even have thought of that. Um, but one of the things that we've been doing, we've got these, this new program within Firehouse, our fire reporting software, that all of his inspections are in there. He does them on an iPad, so he'll go into a business and start doing his inspection. If he sees a violation, he snaps a picture of it. And that's what the, the bottom right picture there, that's a violation. I, I think I know where that is, but I'm not gonna say. But obviously the violation is, they have all this combustible material piled up in front of the electrical box, not allowed by code. That area has to be clear. So he'll take a picture, he'll cite the code section, and when he's all done, any violations, he emails it to them. They have pictures and, and descriptions. It's very easy to figure out what the code violation is. And I think the businesses really appreciate that. Cause sometimes the, if you just read the code language, it can be a little hard to figure out. And then also on enforcement, there's fire investigations and, I don't know, I, I think Mark's a phenomenal investigator. I mean, we go to these places, we went out to a garage fire not too long ago and it was a, a day or two later and we walk up there and it's two minutes into it, Mark's like, it started here, this was the cause. And the, the homeowner was like, wow. And I was like, wow, like this is, he is just really good at doing fire investigations. And if you, any, not every suspicious fire, but a lot of them, he is figuring these things out, what cause and what, you know, how they got started and we. It's not something to brag about, but we've had a lot of arson convictions in Burlington. We've figured out who did it and, and with the help of the police department or the state fire marshal's office or all of us included, we've been able to get some arson convictions. So that's a, that's an important part of actually fire prevention. I mean, if you got a lot of these fires going and you're not figuring them out, you're just gonna have more. Some other things we do fire prevention is the pre-planning. Uh, we really picked that up, uh, this last probably three months. We took one of our injured people that wasn't working a regular shift and he was working, uh, forty hour work weeks on light duty. And we, we have these iPads we're gonna use for the ambulances and, uh, he just went to town on the pre-plan. So, uh, they were out today at the new Silgan plant doing just a, it's not an inspection, it's a pre-plan. So they're going through seeing where, say the gas shut offs are, where the hazardous, uh, chemicals are gonna be kept. They're taking pictures, they're drawing it on a map, and it all goes into this program that whoever shows up to a scene, say we have a fire there, they can bring up the, the pre-plan for Silgan, have all the contact information, all the numbers. They can see a layout of the facility where all the shut offs are that they're needing to get, they're gonna have to access. And where that's way better than what we were doing. We were doing paper, uh, pre-plans back in Bill L's day. And we probably have some from when Bill L was the chief. And the problem with those is they are a heck to try to update. One guy changes his phone number, now you have to go find this old pre-plan, redo the whole thing, print it back off. Uh, and that's what happened. A lot of them were never updated, cause it was so difficult to, to update them. In the back of our command car, there's a huge file full of paper pre-plans. And we do occasionally run to a business that we haven't been to for a while and we'll pull out that pre-plan. Uh, the contact information probably is not right, but the layout generally, I say generally, cause we've had, had, we've had some where we show up and pull it out and it's totally different inside. It's been totally remodeled. And you might as well throw the pre-plan away, cause it's not gonna do you much good, but. So we've been doing a lot, a lot of pre-planning. And it's on a priority basis, you know, what is, if there's a high hazard, then we'll try to get out there and do a pre-plan. And the last thing I, I wanted to mention real quick, is we have a juvenile fire center program and Mark is in charge of that. And really what it's meant to intervene in a kid that's playing with matches or starting fires and try to get ahead of it and say, look, you know, you can't do this. And it's a, it's just an intervention where you try to get that behavior stopped before it turns into something bigger. And we have a lot of kids that end up going through that. Mark is the, the overseer of it, but we have two other people that can, uh, walk the kids through the program. It's been a great thing and we, we usually don't talk about, you know, like I say, this kid was through the program or whatever, but we've had several juveniles go through that program.
Can you just briefly mention the smoke detector program? That doesn't cost us anything, correct?
Oh, right, yeah. So we started the smoke detector program, I think coming up on two years now. Uh, started with a, a grant from the state fire marshal's office. They gave us about two hundred smoke detectors, I believe. And then after that, the, the Elks jumped on board and they did some fundraising with it. We did some co-fundraising and then they also got a grant through the Elks Foundation, uh, purchased a bunch more, uh, smoke detectors. They've also got us some CO detectors. And then this last event we had with the Red Cross where we did the, the one day big, large event, we partnered with them, the Church of Latter Day Saints and some other groups, and we targeted the neighborhoods for that, that one day. And afterwards they gave us another two hundred smoke detectors and I think the Elks have got some more. So we always have, right now anyway, we've always had smoke detectors, CO detectors, not always. That depends on funding that we can find from somebody to go buy some. Um, but all the work like on the weekends, that's myself and the other administrative staff volunteering our time to do that. Um, we use on-duty shifts for that. Uh, the Saturdays, it's the on-duty. We, every Saturday they're out in some neighborhood, walking around looking, uh, checking houses if people let them in and make sure they have working smoke detectors. And that's just the guys that are working, doesn't cost anything, maybe a little gasoline for the, the truck to run out there. Uh, but we've never used any of the city's money to purchase, uh, whether it's tools, screws to put the stuff in, drills, ladders, all that stuff has either been donated, True Value's given us a lot of stuff, Lowe's. As, we go out there and buy the stuff, but it's with somebody else's money, say the Elks. And I don't wanna say the price that they sell them to us for, but I don't think they're making any money, but they said, that's the price and we'll honor this price as long as you keep bringing this receipt back. So we keep bringing the original receipt back and that's the price they sell them for. And I say, you don't have to do this. They wanna do it. So it's, it's awesome.
That is awesome.
So it's been great.
Do you have any idea how many smoke detectors you've installed?
Yeah, it's over fifteen hundred.
Good.
So far. And we have another event on, uh, the thirtieth of this month, is that a Saturday? I believe it's the thirtieth.
Yeah.
The Red Cross has an, another program they're wanting to do where immediately or soon after you have a fire in a neighborhood, they wanna come right after and then canvas that neighborhood like a six or five block radius.
That's great.
So it'll be them and us and, uh, they have some other groups that, that volunteered to do that. We always do the installs. That's kind of our thing. The fire department puts them in, they, they'll do a little, uh, fire safety chat and a, a, a weather safety briefing with them and stuff like that. But we'll do the installs of the smoke detectors.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome. Now these, these are the, the remaining areas of the fire budget, uh, fire administration budget. Three hundred and seventy-four thousand that is, about twenty thousand higher than it was last year. But fourteen thousand five hundred that is for some, I, I don't like using this term, but that's what we put it in the budget. It's a central station, uh, upgrades. Sounds like we're doing something really fancy with the station, but I'll talk about that in the, in the capital budget. But that's a large portion of that increase. Uh, the hazmat team budget, exactly the same as last year, same with the airport. Uh, the majority of the hazmat budget goes, uh, towards training. And then we use some for, uh, we have to pay fifty-six hundred dollars to the Des Moines County Emergency Management Office every year by contract, so, uh, that's where that goes. The airport budget, that covers training. We have seven thousand dollars for training. We pretty much use that all at one shot, cause the airport would like us to have certified firefighters out there for airport coverage. Uh, so instead of sending our guys to Cedar Rapids or Dubuque or somebody for training, we bring this guy in and he does two days of training and gets a bunch of our people certified, uh, to cover the airport. And then also a lot of that has to do with station two upkeep, the, uh, cleaning supplies, the phones, that sort of thing. That comes out of the airport budget. So FY seventeen, our capital budget, we're pretty excited to get a new ambulance. Uh, that picture right there is our, the latest one that we bought. Uh, it's been, no offense to Bill L, it's been the best ambulance that we've ever had. Part of it is that it's four-wheel drive and the other part is the ride. It's, it's, the patients don't complain. That's, they're not saying, oh, what a great ride, but they're not complaining about the ride. Our other ambulances, we get a lot of complaints about the ride. They're just, they're big trucks and they just do not ride well. No matter what kind of suspension we've tried to put under them, they're just not, they're not good as far as patient comfort. So that's one of the big things we're looking forward to. And the, the four-wheel drive for our city, the way we respond to so many hills and the snow, we were putting chains on all the other ambulances, automatic chains, costs, actually costs more than adding four-wheel drive and they're not near as effective as four-wheel drive. So we're hoping to get pretty much the twin. Actually, we had a, a vendor in yesterday with the, the newest model of this. And the ride is an, an upgrade to what we have and it, it's unbelievable how well it rides in the back, which I've always thought all along, I mean, why don't you have Cadillac or somebody making ambulances? We really need them to ride good, that's the important part. Uh, the next line there is for, uh, fire equipment. Part of that is the, the annual, we purchase turnout gear every year. I'll talk about that in a minute. Uh, but also some newer stuff on there is we need to replace a bunch of rope, uh, rescue equipment that just, it's out of date. We can no longer use it for actual rescues. Um, we're buying a, an electric, uh, fan, the big fan, if you ever see us at a fire scene, almost always, we have a gas-powered fan out exhausting. Actually, it's, it's pressurizing the house and blowing the smoke out of another opening. Uh, the problem with those fans is they're gas motors, so you're blowing exhaust into a house, you're trying to clear the, the fumes and other things out of. So it's, you, it works, but not as well as an electric fan with no exhaust will work. And also we go to a lot of carbon monoxide calls where they have a har, high carbon monoxide level. And a gas-powered fan is really just self-defeating to try to put that in there to blow the, the air out, so. We've got a fan in there. And we've got four, uh, ice rescue suits that we use for ice rescue. Uh, the ones we have, I believe, are somewhere around ten years old and, uh, we can't repair them any longer. We've tried different grants to get the suits and it hasn't worked out, so, uh, we have them in this budget. And the last thing there is the fourteen thousand five hundred for central fire station. The, the biggest part of that is for the flooring, um, for the high-traffic areas, our main hallways upstairs, the officer's quarters, if you've been up there. We've, we try to keep them clean, we rent the cleaner. It, it looks okay, but it's really, it's wore out where even when you clean it, it doesn't quite look right. Uh, we had several bids on carpet. It's one of those things you hope, well, maybe I can just fit it into my budget this year, some, there's no one-line item that I have currently that would pay for carpet. I think everybody's been to the station, so you've seen our kitchen that we redid with the laminate. We bought the laminate, came on a pallet and then, uh, the firefighters put it in. And that's what we're gonna do with, with the, the rest of the hallway, the officer's quarters will all be laminate, uh, and we'll put it in ourselves. About half of the cost of doing carpet and I think long-term it'll, it'll hold up better than carpet. Uh, and then the other part of that fourteen thousand five hundred dollars is for chairs. And I'm like, really? I'm asking for money for chairs? And, yeah. That's what, that's what our chairs will look worse than that. We have a hodgepodge of chairs that were given to us or purchased, maybe one here and one there. Again, we've tried to clean like the kitchen chairs over and over and now they're, they, they don't look good, which is one thing, but they're breaking down, which is another thing. I thought, well, maybe we can, again, find money in our budget this year to buy chairs. But there's no such thing as a cheap chair, like a commercial quality chair that you're gonna use twenty-four hours a day, uh, for our kitchen and for our training room. And our training room holds about thirty people. That's about the largest class that we'll hold. So we're gonna shoot for the thirty chairs that we can use for the kitchen and for the, uh, the training room, so have those both set up. And the, the budget is a little bit on the high side. We just went with what the Han dealer told us would, would cost for chairs, uh, the ones we were looking at. So I think when we go out for quotes, it'll be hopefully considerably cheaper than that, but I don't know. I'm, never went out and just bought chairs. We thought about maybe trying to buy one or two this year and I thought, we'll buy two this year and then two next year and then we'll be right back where we were at. And I didn't wanna say our, our training room is, it's like a community use room. I mean, we're using it for all kinds of county functions, city functions. Anybody that wants to hold the class, uh, we offer that room up. Uh, we do CPR in there for the public at least twice a month, it's regularly scheduled. Other people that wanna do a class, they just call and we'll schedule them a class.
Chief.
Yes.
Before you go to Han and buy chairs, just look on govdeals.com once.
Okay.
See, uh, see what you can find there. There's, um, pretty tremendous deals.
Okay, sounds great. And then we've also been told to look at prison industries, but online their prices didn't look all that great, so I don't know if that. So, I don't know if that, but GovDeals, we'll do that. The next thing I have on here is our, the next five years, not including the year coming up. And I realize it's all subject to change. I think I clicked ahead here. We have turnout gear and every year, we try to replace five sets of turnout gear. It needs to be replaced every five to 10 years, depending on who's wearing it. Obviously, my turnout gear probably lasts the rest of my career, but a new hire that's on a hose line going into a lot of fires, washing his gear, getting it dirty a lot, about five years is what he's going to get out of the turnout gear and then needs it replaced. So, every year that, we've been funding somewhere around the $10,000 mark. It's a little over $2,000 now for a set of turnout gear. We try to find the worst sets, replace them, or if we have a new hire, we use that money to buy them a set of gear. The ambulance is in there for every three years, so 2020 would actually be another one. The heart monitors. Currently, we only have two of them that can do what we call transmitting 12-leads. So, when the guys are out in the field and they think the patient's having a heart attack, they do a 12-lead. Well, only the two newest ones are able to then take that EKG and actually transmit it to Great River. And that's, a standard of care is being able to transmit your 12-leads. Could you send it out there? And if they look at it and they're like, "Yeah, they're having a heart attack," they prepare for the patient before we get there. A lot of times, they'll call in the doctor, nurses, they'll have the cath lab ready to go. We could bring the patient in and totally bypass the emergency room. So, we really need that capability on all of our ambulances. Currently, we only have it on two. The next thing there is the command car. Looking to replace that. It's a 2006. Anytime you see us at a fire, you'll see our command car there. It's got the incident commander, all the tracking stuff to keep track of the personnel on scene. I would say by 2019, it won't be like it's a junker, but it'll be like our engines, not something that you want to rely on to get you to a fire scene. Something that we could probably put in another role. And then 2020, that's when we have the next engine in there. Look, really looking forward to that. And I did want to talk to you just a minute about the AFG grants.
Before you get to that, just as you look at, within your packet, you also have the, we didn't have this to you last time, but you have the CIP plan listed in there and as you, when you do go and look through the equipment that he has and it shows, it lists out all of the items of equipment that he's just gone through. It also has how it would all be paid for. Just a reminder on how that's set up, the ambulance that is in this next year's proposed budget is GEO-funded for a portion of it. The remainder of that, as the CTAA provides $10,000 a year, it goes into a pot of funds that we use towards the purchase of the ambulances. So, that's, that you'll see that a portion of that's being funded with that CTAA pot of funds and then the rest are GEO-bonding. The other items that are on there, the turnout gear, heart monitors, command car are all set to be paid for out of local option sales tax. And then the pumper truck that, the fire truck that's to be purchased in 2020 would be a GEO-bond item again. So... I'm sorry, go back to you, but I did cover.
So, I really thought I needed to mention that, the assistance to firefighter grants. Every year, they open that program up and every year, we apply. That's what the deputy chief and I did the previous two weeks. For about two weeks, we were working on our grants. They were due last Friday. And we put in for the heart monitors. After we consulted with a grant writer and he went through all of our equipment and the ages, he said, "You should put in for the heart monitors. They should qualify and that's your best chance of getting funding for something." So, that was our number-one thing. We put in for the three heart monitors. Don't remember what the dollar amount was, somewhere around 90,000. And then we also put in for a tender, which is not on here, but that's the large water hauler that we need for the rural townships. That was the other thing. We don't actually have one that large in our fleet. And the one that we do that we use is actually a 92, but it's a smaller truck. So, that was the other thing. He said, "We should try to get on an AFG grant." It's a lot of work writing those grants, but last year, we were successful and we got some extrication equipment. That's what the pictures are. We got some vehicle struts, which really made for a car that's on its side to stabilize a car on its side. And then also, the airbags which lift, you can lift vehicles. It's unbelievable what a little bag of air can lift up. So, it's about $21,500, what they call a micro grant. We were able to get those. So, just know whenever you hear people talk about AFG grants, we are taking every opportunity to get funding with those. We never let one pass without replying. So, I think I got about two slides here to finish up. And I wish I wouldn't have, ah, great, came in at once. Just some things that we're working on, again, a lot of the same stuff that I talked about last year. We use the NFPA standards and ISO to kind of, to set our goals for the year. These are things we're working for. These are things, how we measure ourselves, how effective we are. One of the biggest things we're working on is trying to decrease response times. Whether it's an ambulance or an engine, they want the first crews there within about four minutes, so a four-minute drive time. And they give you a differing amount of times to get out of the station. If it's an EMS call, they think you should get the call and be in your rig going within one minute. If it's a fire call, you get about 90 seconds because you have to get all your gear on before you go down the road. So, a total from dispatch to on-scene is somewhere around five minutes is what our goal is. But, like I said, there's some areas where that's not happening. So, we've been trying this thing with West Burlington, get our engine, or ambulance actually closer to the patients, a lot of them. Unfortunately, it only happened, so far, it's been three days where we've had staffing to do that, but it has worked out on those days. The next thing there is trying to increase on-scene numbers and I'm not asking you to give me a bunch of people. I'm just saying, we are working on getting the appropriate number of people on scene. Our deal with West Burlington, where they respond an engine automatically over into the city, that helps. We've developed box cards. So, when we know we have a, and these are cards that are held to dispatch, when we know we have a working fire, we can just tell dispatch, we say, "Strike a box" and basically, they pull out this card, they go to the box and in that box, it'll say, "Call seven off-duty Burlington firefighters," or "Call another engine from West Burlington." "Call the chief, the deputy chief, the fire marshal if we're not already working that day. Call superior." I think I'm missing one. Maybe that's it. So, we get all of those people automatically. Now, it's not like having people in the station and responding, but it does, does help to get more people to the scene sooner rather than later. And we have box cards for all different kinds of responses, so that's something that we're working on and touching those up all the time. Our training, we spend a lot of time, we try to, on training. The standard is about 16 hours of fire training per month for each person. It's very hard to get that, but they let you count a lot of things towards training. So, we try to count everything that we, you know, if you do an inspection, a pre-plan, you can count that as training. So, there's 16 hours of that. All of our drivers have to get 12 hours of training per year on driving, which pretty much everybody's a driver. And then the EMS people, depending on if they're, most of them are paramedics, they need at least 30 hours of training every year. You need 60 every two years to re-qualify or recertify, so we spend a lot of time on training. Equipment, we're just trying to keep up with the standards and if the standard says you have to have a 16-foot ladder on the engine, we put a 16-foot ladder on the engine. That's all that is. Health and safety, it really comes down to looking after our own. There's a lot of things that we do, pre-employment physicals, post-employment, every, everybody over 35 gets a physical every other year. We just started doing this return-to-work functional testing, so if somebody's off for more than 30 days, they actually go get functionally tested to make sure they're able to come back 100% to our job. Anything less than 100%, you really can't come back and be a firefighter. And some of the other things we, it's really hard to address in health and safety is the mental health aspect. One of the big topics is, within the fire service, is the number of people leaving the job, especially people that run an ambulance service. It's very stressful. You run into a lot of, a lot of situations that aren't too pleasant. So, we've had people come in and talk about mental health issues and also working out coping mechanisms, that kind of thing. So, that's something that we're, we are concerned about. I also listed there our bariatric equipment. I don't know if everybody's familiar with that, but we have an ambulance set up for bariatric patients, which are, we consider any patient over 300 to be a bariatric patient. Takes more than just the two people on an ambulance to take care of that patient. So, we've put policies in place. We were given some equipment. We were injuring a lot of people. We were on those patients, so we're doing everything possible not to have that. And I think we're doing a really good job, so that's, that's important as far as overtime and everything else and keeping people on the job is not getting them hurt lifting patients. And I've already talked a lot about the fire prevention. I think I've covered everything there. If I can get all these to just open up here, but real quick, I'm not going to name everything that we do as far as community involvement. What, anything that has to do with fire EMS on a county level or a local level, we are involved. We, I'm the vice president of the Des Moines County EMS. We have the president and vice president of the County Fire Association. We have the vice president of the Mavis Division 62, which is a huge organization. The fire marshal, he just came off being the president of the state association. He's held, I think, every position on the state level. One of the other programs that we do is a critical incident stress debriefing. We have the vice president for that and that's, that's a group you don't hear a lot about because we don't announce it when they go out, but somebody, some fire department that are EMS service or police department that has a really bad call, stresses your people to the max, they have a team that goes there and they do a debriefing with them. So, we have two people on our department that are trained to do that and we actually have the vice president of our area team on there. We're involved in the Iowa Hazmat Task Force. We've got a lot of free training, a lot of free equipment because of our involvement there. And I know I'm forgetting a lot of things here. I already talked about the smoke detector program. We do CPR and first aid classes, at least two a month. A lot of times, we'll do several more than that. Our explorer program, we actually got a guy that was an Eagle Scout now that's in charge of our explorer program. I think it's, that's doing really well, so he knows his way around scouting. I already mentioned the presentations, the community groups. We're always out there. Anybody that wants us to come and do a presentation, we're more than willing to do that. We're also doing stuff like Toys for Tots, the library reading program, the after-school program. If you get a chance, I'm done, I think, but if you get a chance to get online, there's a video from the Midwest Magic. I think it's on the police department's Facebook page and on ours. I don't know if you've seen it yet, but they came down a little, did a little video, little promo for the Midwest Magic game coming up. And I think there'll be more fun at the game, so between the police and fire department. We'll see what happens, but it's a great video, so... I took way longer than I thought I was going to take, so is there any questions?
I just have one suggestion. Peggy's looking for something extra for Bill to do. You just might want to keep that in the back of your mind there.
I already use Bill. He already takes care, helps take care of the museum. When I do testing, like promotional testing, he helps me out. Yeah, he's not retired. Appreciate all the help that he gives me. And I apologize for running out of this meeting, but unfortunately, my son has basketball games Mondays and Thursdays for January and February. The two days we have meetings, so I try to find a stand-in for the days that I can't make it, but.
Good deal.
Do it.
All right.
Good luck at the game.
Thanks.
And thank you for the presentation. Good job. Okay, everybody's favorite librarian, Mrs. Freiber.
Thank you.
Do you want me to go ahead and get started?
Yeah, you need to move the microphone down.
Yeah, he's definitely taller than me. There we go.
Go ahead.
Do you want to go ahead and get started?
We're okay, I guess.
Take a little stretch break? Okay. Want to make sure you guys have time to get to everything tonight. I know you have, Jim wants to talk about some other things tonight as well. So, thank you for your time. I was just here about two months ago to give the library's annual report. And so, at that time, I talked about our services and the level of use of our services. So, tonight, I'm going to focus on the resources and operations that make all of that happen. And, so, we will talk about our proposed budget for fiscal year '17, a little history and context for our budget. We'll talk about staffing and organizational structure or the way that we use our staff, operations, touch briefly on capital funding, community support, and then also, some of our current and future initiatives that I wanted to bring up. So, in terms of just our total budget, I know you have the handout that Stephanie gave you that gives you that number on there. So, in fiscal year '17, $1.3 million. Putting that into context, I give you the several years here, that is about the same amount as it was in fiscal year '06. And actually, I did not put in the net with, I'm listening to the chief, "Oh, I should have added that in." But, you can see that on the handout that Stephanie gave you, that after the income that we have, revenue that we have, it would be about $936,000. And our income has gone up since fiscal year '06, so I would say probably that, that net cost from the general fund is probably less than it was in fiscal year '06. Our income, as you can see on your, your handout, is the fees that we charge, the intergovernmental, those are the communities that contract with us and then there's also a library levy. And all of those have gone up a bit since fiscal year '06. Now, fiscal year '06 was the last full year that we were in our old facility. So, as you know, since then, the use of the library has gone up quite a bit. And, actually, fiscal year '17 is kind of an exciting year for us because it's hard for me to believe we're already there, but at the end of this year, in November, we will be at 10 years in our new facility. So, I will be back at some point this year, I'm sure, and telling you about what we're going to be doing to celebrate that and have our 10-year birthday for our newer facility.
Do you have agreements with other towns now, or the county that?
Yes, that intergovernmental line there in terms of income. We have 20 AD agreements now with the county, with West Burlington, and with Middletown. Middletown just started all within the last year or so, so that's, that's a newer one for us. So, we're glad to have them and be able to serve that community as well. And that is a change, those 20 AD agreements. I think we started those maybe two or three years ago, but they're 10-year agreements. And I think that's been a really positive change to develop those, those type of agreements now. It's not a year-to-year discussion. It's something that's a little more longstanding. Another, just briefly about history of where we are with our budget, and I know some of you know this more than others, but I know we have a new council member, so I just wanted to just briefly say that, you know, when we had a situation where we had three long-term employees retire at once and it would happen to coincide with about at the same time that we were hearing about the city's financial condition. And so, the library put together a proposal to have some savings by changing up those, that personnel. And it was then after that that there were some other cuts to the budget. When we look at personnel, one of the things that's changed since we have reduced budgets is that we have moved more of our funding, our wages. This is just the wages portion, showing the difference between full-time and part-time and how much we use proportionally. So, we definitely use more now for part-time, less for full-time. And you see that a little bit better in this slide here where you see the personnel changes that we've made. I use fiscal year '02 on this slide because that was sort of our peak in terms of staffing, full-time equivalencies at that time. Full-time equivalencies at that time were at twenty-one point seven six. I'm really, just as an aside, I have to say, I'm really glad at that time, they had this many people, because that was the same year that I happened to be looking for a job. And looking to move to a new community to raise my family, and saw a job in this town I'd never been to in Iowa. So, I'm really glad that they were hiring that year, it's worked out well for me, at least, and I'm really glad to have my family here in Burlington for almost fourteen years now. But I use that really not because it's the year I was hired, but because it was sort of that, that peak in employment at the library. So you can see, it's changed by about five full-time equivalencies.
Rhonda, do you have the comparisons to, to last year's?
Actually, yes, I'm glad you, I'm glad you mentioned that, there's no change. Our proposed fiscal year seventeen is the same level that we are at right now, yeah. This was actually a slide from last year, I said changed a few numbers on, because really, that hadn't changed. We, when we made that change and we had three people that retired, one of those was in the administration level. Administration is me and an administrative assistant, we moved that position to half-time instead of full-time. So, the administrative assistant had been there for many years, over thirty years, I believe. And so some of the duties in her position were really things that could go into another department. So we cut that into a half-time position and moved some duties to another department. We also at that time had our maintenance person, who'd been there for many years, retire, and we went to no maintenance person on staff. And that was one that, I don't think I realized the impact that was gonna have when I made that proposal. I've learned a lot about HVAC in the meantime, and I've learned a lot more about facilities management myself. But one of the, the things, I guess, I would say, is sort of a silver lining in that, that change. We did contract out our cleaning services, and we were fortunate to find a group that works well with us, they do a great job, and they fit in with our budget. So, they've been with us since then, and that's, that's been working out well. The other thing is that we, before this time, never used property maintenance, because we had a maintenance person on staff. So now we rely on property maintenance, and I have to say, it's been a great arrangement. We, we really benefit greatly from them, and they do a wonderful job. I don't know how they feel about us calling with all of our, our issues, but we really enjoy working with them, and that's, that's worked out well.
Can I ask how much, how much you work with property maintenance?
Um, let me see if we have that in here. The, quite, whenever we have a need, we call them up. They do replace our filters on a regular basis, and there's some things they come and just do. Otherwise, it's us calling and saying, a sink is leaking, or, you know, so it varies month to month, quite a bit.
It'd just be nice to know how much, how much time and money is being reserved from.
Yes, the, um, property maintenance. This year, we're estimated to be about thirteen thousand dollars that, of our budget that will go to property maintenance. In the, our proposal is for sixteen thousand. We, we had budgeted for this year eleven thousand, and it looks like we're gonna, we may trend a little over. We did have a couple bigger projects they helped us with recently, so I know we're a little over at this point, I, we'll see how it ends up in the end. But they've done quite a few projects for us, and have been very helpful. Yeah, and that has grown a little bit over the years, since we've started using them. In terms of hours, I couldn't tell you, but I, I know the money part of it. Also, we did make a change to our, to change from four departments to three, and I'll talk about it again in just a moment. And I mentioned in the previous slide that we have made a change from having more half-time, or twenty-hour staff members, and a little fewer in our full-time members. So you can see that in this change too. We use fewer hours for our clerks, I put sub after that, because I usually describe them as like substitute teachers. When we have a staff member who's gonna be at the school doing a book talk, or we have someone speaking to Kiwanis, or out of the building, and we need some extra coverage at the desk, we call them in. So on average, now at least, our clerks work maybe eight to twelve hours in a week. And, you know, that, that has gone down, we've been, we've worked on that. Our shelvers, the amount of hours we use for shelvers also has gone down considerably, and I think that one's particularly interesting, because we were in, in two thousand and two, we did not have the kind of circulation we have now. So the number of items getting checked out, and then having to come back and be put back on the shelf was smaller than what it is now. So we're actually re-shelving more items than we did then, with fewer hours. And a lot of that has to do with the building. In our old facility, we were, had to shelve on three different floors. There was a part of the building you had to hand-carry the books up, little narrow stairs, to get them to the shelves. Where now, everything's on one level and you can just go straight with your cart to that, and we have some great shelvers who kind of practically jog around the building, so. I added on here too, in fiscal year fifteen, we were, we came in lower than we had budgeted for our full-time equivalencies, because we had some staff changes and some periods where we had some positions were open, and, and then also, we've, I think we've just been fairly conservative with our use of calling in our clerks or our substitutes. So I mentioned our organizational chart has changed. I mentioned this last year when I was here, because it was just at the point where it was changing. So we started fiscal year fifteen with four departments within our organization. And then, and we had a person leave, I should say, all of our personnel changes have been through attrition. So, we've been able to, to look at positions each time they open up and decide, are there changes we need to make, and, and look at that. So we're always evaluating that. And so we had someone leave, and this, this decision took us a few months of seeing, could we do this? But we decided to combine and change around our departments, so currently, we have three departments within our organization. I just wanna talk briefly about what, how people are used and what kind of work they do. As I said, there's two people in administration, one of them is me, and then we have a half-time assistant. And these are the kind of things that we work on, on a regular basis, so we get to work with our Board of Trustees, two of whom are here tonight, so thank you for being here. And also, staff development, scheduling, working with vendors, all these kind of things that we do. Our other department is youth services, youth and, youth and family services, because we work as much with the kids as we do with the, the family and parents. And in that, we are working to help build learners and then support learners. So, I know I talked quite a bit about that in our, when I talked about the annual report, so I won't, won't go over all of that. But really, we look at it as an opportunity to help kids become learners and be ready to enter school, ready to learn, with some of the different things that we do, starting with baby garden and our babies need books outreach. And then supporting those kids once they are in school. And, because as I, as I know I talk about all the time, it's so important for kids early on to become good readers, because that just all builds. And, and the earlier they find success, the more likely they're gonna graduate. So those are the kind of programs we are trying to help support, and we work very closely with the schools. As you can see, we go to the middle schools for outreach visits, we do before and after-school outreach. We do author visits at the library, and then we'll often call the schools and say, would you like to have them come there too? So we try to work closely with them, and that's not just Burlington. We work with Notre Dame, Great River Christian School, and West Burlington as well. In fact, Great River Christian School brings volunteers every other Friday, and so that's been a, been a great arrangement. We also, our others, here we go, this is the one where we had the biggest change, when we changed up to just three. We combined technology and collections. And I don't think we could've done this without the person that we had in that position for technology. It was our collections person that, that left. And she is always willing to learn new things, and you know with technology, you always have to be learning new things. And so she, she really made this work. We've been at this new configuration for almost a year now, and, and I, I think she has done a great job at, at learning a whole new set of skills. And we're really glad that we have her, and that she was willing to take that on. So this department does a lot of different things. We have a lot of public computers to take care of, the wireless, the schools districts, now that the kids have the Chromebooks, directs kids who don't have Wi-Fi at home to come to the library. So, you know, our Wi-Fi gets used quite a bit, by them and others, of course, check out laptops. We also rely heavily on technology at our service desks, and at our, at our staff desks. So, they stay very busy making sure all that is working. And then also, she also learned the new hat of taking care of the collections, from ordering the materials and choosing what to order, all the way through getting them to the shelf. Our other department, our third department, is dealing with the community, it'll come up eventually, dealing with community and customer service. And, I think I hit it. So, that one, there we go, okay, here it is. We, as you know, we get a lot of use of our meeting rooms, and so they work on making sure that all goes smoothly. They also are in charge of all of our marketing and promotion, the social media newsletter. We do homebound delivery, classes for adults. They also then deal with the customer service desk and the help desk, that, that frontline service. I tried to put together another slide to show you this next part, but it just looked, it just didn't work for me. So, too much crossover. One of the things that we do, as you can see here, it says there are ten people in this department, only five FTE. It's actually, there are three full-time, two half-time, and then five of those clerks are in this department. But what isn't reflected as well here is that people who work in youth services department also know how to work over at the help desk. Or they do things in the collections department, or they help with technology. So, there's a lot of cross-training, and that really helps us, because when we have fewer staff and somebody's out, you want someone else to be able to step in and be able to help out wherever needed. So, we work really hard to make sure everyone is very well-trained, and I'm really glad to have staff that is willing to take those kind of things on, and learn lots of different areas, so we can support each other and have flexibility. It was in two thousand and eleven, and early two thousand and twelve, that we worked on a new strategic plan. And, you know, strategic planning is so important, it's a chance to look critically at what you're doing, to get community input, and then also to kind of focus on what is most important that you're doing. And so we knew that was important, and really, that's why we wanted to do this plan. But it became even more important for us, because it was shortly after that that we started having reduced budgets. And it's this that I came back to over and over, what's most important, what do we need to keep our focus on? And so as we make changes, this has been a really important thing for us to look at. So, and the one side, you see the six areas that the community members and the board, as we went through this process, identified as key areas for the library, early literacy, lifelong learning, all of those. It's kind of a mouthful, though, to list all of those off. So I, in the last few years, and you probably have seen it if you've seen me in previous presentations, I really boil it down to four words. And it's those four things that I try to always be thinking about, is youth, education, technology, and community. Those are the key things, the areas that we can make an impact in our community. And so, you can see, we've, we've looked at naming our departments so that they sort of fit with those key areas. And when we look at allocating resources and staff time, that's what we look at. So that's why I wanted to include that in here as well. So, back to numbers part of it. Operating expenses include things like facilities, so the lights, you know, that kind of thing. Technology, keeping up all of that equipment, the supplies, training, staff training. And then also what we spend on collections, materials for the collection, for, so the books and all of those things. So you can see where we are fiscal year sixteen, just a small change being proposed for fiscal year seventeen. One of the ways that we've been able to make a change, as, and we've had less money in that area, is through energy efficiency. And it's something actually that we did several years ago, when we started with our Alliant retro-commissioning project. I think I've mentioned that here before, but that, Alliant came to us and offered a free study, and then they came up with some things that we could do. I, I know it was, it was, we hadn't been in the building for very many years. But they came and they do these, they look at new buildings even and say, hey, what are some things that you can still tweak here? And, so we did that. And we then also, since then, have done some lighting upgrades, changed some things to LED. We also did another Alliant energy audit, I believe it was just last year, and there were some very little projects at that point, but we did those. And property maintenance has been helping us with replacing the ballasts and the bulbs and, and with more energy-efficient ones, as we need to do that. So, that all has added up to annual savings for us, and a few rebates from Alliant along the way. So those are, that's one of the ways that we've been really conscious of keeping our expenses down. This is actually a piece of that operating one that I showed earlier, just pulled out to look at separately. All the, the piece of that operating money that is used for buying materials for the collection. And again, this is one where, if you look at the detail of it, you will see that we put most of the money into the youth department. Because that was the number one thing, I'm, my four words, youth. And so, we do purchase more heavily in that area than we do in others. Doesn't mean we're not buying new things for the adult collection, but that's where we put most of our funds to. And when Jim talks about the capital improvement plan, we do not ask for anything in CIP, and historically, we haven't. Doesn't mean we don't have those kinds of expenses, it means that we go to outside sources for that. For example, we just got a grant from Alliant for two thousand dollars, and that's purchasing our furniture for our teen area. So, so those are, that's just one example, but just wanted to bring that up. And then in terms of community support, you know, we're, we're a department where, you know, people, people choose to come to the library. And so to me, the fact that they choose to come and use us at this high level, says to me that they, there's a lot of support there for what, what we are doing. In fact, you know, when you look at other libraries with a similar, from a similar-sized population community, we have, excuse me, in some cases, two or three times as much use as some of those libraries. So, that, that use, I think, is a good sign of community support. Another one is the amount of time and talents that people donate to us as volunteers. I didn't know Bill was gonna be here, but he's, he's in the picture there, because he volunteers with us at the library. So whether it's our friends' volunteers, and that's a big chunk of that number there, or it's our board members who come and help paint the meeting rooms, we just did recently, in fact, I think that's Jerry up there, so I got both of you in. And they do contribute quite a few hours. Our board members are volunteers, our friends' members, we have teens that come in the summer and volunteer, and some throughout the year. And then some that help us with special projects all year round. I actually had a friends' meeting this afternoon, right before coming here. And so not only do the, they give of their time to work on the book sales, to work in footnotes, and deduce fundraisers, like the trivia night they just did, they also give us funds, and they, just, just in this one month, I just asked them for about three thousand dollars today. So, so we're very fortunate to have them to help us out. One of the things you don't see in the budget here is any funding for speaker fees, supplies. So for all those different classes that we do, and get so much attendance at, that's where we're going to the friends. And so whenever you come to the library for a storytime, or anything has a snack, whatever it may be, we're going to the friends for that funding. I mentioned the Alliant Energy Foundation grant, this is the second year we've gotten a grant from them. We also work to try to get grants, so when our staff members go to conferences, they try, if possible, to get a grant to do that. The Fine Arts League has been supportive of us, Murray Foundation, for the last couple of years, has helped fund projects with us. I put on here the fundraisers, because we did just do the trivia night with the friends. We also, they're gonna be planning an appraisal night coming up in the summer, so we do things like that. Meeting room users, just about a year or so ago, we sent out a mailing to people that use the meeting rooms and got several donations. And we continue to get donations from them, so it was a good reminder, I think, to some of the groups that use us regularly, to think of us when they're making donations. We also get memorial gifts, so in some cases, it's an individual person will come in and say, please buy a book in memory of this person. In other cases, the person designates the library as, as their memorial site, and so we get several, and we might do. And we might do a project, we recently added some shelving in memory of someone, because that's what the family chose to use that memorial money for. And then I have our, our new stained glass window up here, because that was a lovely gift as well, of their time and of their talent to give to the library. I wanted to talk a little bit about some of the initiatives that we are working on and where I see us putting time, and that'll come up here in a moment, but the one area that we're really working on right now is outreach. That's grown quite a bit, because, and I mentioned some of those things with going to the schools, we do, there we go, we do preschool storytimes, we go in, a new one for us is going into the second grade to just, to help, help kids. It seems they say right about third grade is a kind of a cutoff time. If you haven't gotten your reading skills where they need to be by third grade, you're not as likely to catch up. So we're going into the second grade and presenting and working with the teachers and the librarians, and we've been going to seventh, eighth grade for quite some time. So we've been doing a lot of that. We added the Bookmobile last summer, and just had a meeting about that again this week. So we're looking forward to doing that again. But I think that's an area where we are going to want to continue to do more and more. I don't know if you read my column in the Hawkeye last Friday, it's, but I do a column every month. And the thing that I wrote about was about people who don't get to the library. At our friends' meeting today, I had someone tell me that they were at a meeting, and one of the people in the meeting said, you know, I've been to the library before, I've gone in to the coffee shop, and I've been to meetings, but I've never, like, gone farther in. And so she took him by the hand, gave him a tour, of course, but there are several people who don't, aren't aware of what we have, or haven't made the trip in. We often will hear people who said, I've lived here for years, but I haven't been in, it's my first time. So one of the things we want to do is help go out to them, so they're more aware of what we have to offer, but also find out, and that's what my column is about, what, what is it that's, that's keeping you? Life's busy, transportation's a problem, whatever it might be. And so we're looking at ways that we can take down any of those barriers that might be keeping people from coming to the library. And so one of the things that we're doing to help raise awareness and, and address those, we have an intern from Iowa Wesleyan that just started with us, and she's been working on a community survey. We're looking at all of our policies and procedures to see what we can do to make them more welcoming and easier for people. And one of those that we recently developed is a payment plan. Our procedure in the past has been, if you have a fine over $5, you can't check out. Well, we developed a system now, so that you have more limited access after you get a larger fine, but you can be working on paying it off. And I'm really excited about this, because it allows people to continue to be library customers, continue to use our resources, and we're kind of meeting them. We're being fiscally responsible, because if they have materials that they have checked out and have never returned, well, you know, we, there has to be something there, but, but we want to help them continue to be customers. So we're just looking at all of those kinds of things and trying to find ways to make the library a part of everyone's life, and more beneficial to members in our community. Because, as I, every department has said at some point, that we're all a part of making Burlington a great place to live, work, and play, and I'm really honored to be able to work with my colleagues in the other departments to make that happen. So eventually, that last slide's going to pop up, but that, that was it.
I, I kind of want to comment just a little bit on your outreach, too. One of the things that library personnel are involved with is the Bridges Outreach.
Yes.
And I don't know if, if you want to go into where you're seeing the department working that initiative.
Sure, sure. Yeah, we had a couple of staff members attend the Bridges Out of Poverty training that they had at the West Burlington School, and we both, after that training, decided this is something we really want to get involved in. So I, I went to one meeting this week, she went to the other one, because we had conflict, conflicts, but we both want to be involved in, in making this happen, and whether that's the library helping to provide space, to provide resources, you know, it's the library being part of that. One of the other things that came out of it for us, besides just us giving of our time and, and our, you know, wanting to be part of this initiative, is going back to what I was talking about, looking at our procedures and policies, because one of the things I talked about in this training is how can, that a lot of our institutions are sort of middle-class institutions, they have sort of a set of rules that we don't necessarily articulate, but they have a set of rules. And for people living in poverty, they may be intimidating, or they may not feel welcoming. So part of what we're doing is taking that training back. I'd love to have them come and do more training for all of our staff, but taking that training back and talking about, well, what are ways in which someone who's never been in the library might feel uncomfortable coming in? You know, we, I grew up going to the public library, and it was just part of my life, my whole life, and so it, it's very comfortable for me, but it may not be comfortable for someone else. And things like our payment plan, to say, look, we don't want you to have to give your last $5 so you can check out a book today. We want to work with you, and if you can pay a little bit each time you're in, we're going to, we're going to work with you on it. So, so those are some of the things that come out of that as well.
Yeah, and, well, one of the comments that was made through those Bridges trainings, specifically thinking of the library, the idea that spending time reading and the impact that that has, I don't know if that rung with, rung true with you.
Oh, yeah, that, one of the things that they talked about at that training was how important it is to read to kids from a young age. And that's exactly the, what we, we are all about. With our Babies Need Book Program, wanting to get a book into the hands of new parents, we also give them information about how important literacy is, because it's not just a, kids are developing language while they listen to their parents read aloud, they're bonding with their parents, there's so many things happening there. But I believe at that training, they were talking about how children that grew up in poverty come into the schools with such a more limited vocabulary than kids that grew up with parents who read to their kids on a regular basis. And I know one of the things that we hear when we go to conferences and things are that, when you talk, there's a lot of words you don't use, just in, in conversation. When you read books, there's words, like, you don't usually talk about elephants, maybe, but in books, that word will come up. So by reading books, they're being exposed to vocabulary beyond what they would get just by listening to their parents talk to each other, listening to conversations in the home, so.
Yeah, we, I remember reading about an elephant in the middle of a parade, about what did you see on the way to school? I can't remember what the title of that book was, but.
Seuss one.
It is a Dr. Seuss book. We had about 15 folks who attended Bridges Out of Poverty. The library is on a couple of the oversight committees that are going to be involved in, in this as this moves forward. Police Department is taking a fairly active role, and I, I want to highlight the importance of what I see for our involvement in this type of activity moving forward. As the police department's looking at it, you want, why don't you come forward and just kind of see where you, because I, I'm hijacking your presentation here for a minute, but I think this is an important topic.
Yeah, good evening. No, kind of our approach to it is, is there are several different trainings that are coming up, and we're going to participate and train the trainer, so we can have people in our organization that are trained in this. What I took from it is, people in poverty is a cultural thing, and sometimes when they're, they're very upset, they're really not upset at us, they just don't know how else to deal with it, and that's how they deal with it. So if we can learn how to communicate that, instead of having this confrontation, it's like, oh, I understand, I understand why you're so upset over this, what may seem minor to us is all part of, how, how am I going to get by for the next hour? You know, we think about, how am I, how are we going to get by in FY17? Well, how, how am I going to get by till 7 o'clock tonight? And so that, and there's a training coming up called Boys in Crisis, that we're going to send our SROs to and a couple of our shift sergeants to bring that information back. You know, why are some of these young males doing what they're doing? And I think that that type of training is just huge for our organization to become culturally familiar with this. And so that's where we're on it, so. And, yeah, we're taking it very seriously, and I think it'll be, it'll help our culture change as we move along.
But I'm proud of all of our groups that are taking on this. I strongly encourage folks to, and I'm very happy to see that they took that suggestion. Subtle reminders or hints or whatever. And I know that there will be something coming out in the Hawkeye, I think, this, the end of this week, an article on the program, and there will be more that comes out on Bridges as time goes on. So we do have an active role in that, and I just want you to be cognizant of that as, as that program unfolds and over the course of this next year. Sorry, I'll let you go back to the library.
That's all right, I, I was done, so if there are any questions for me, I can answer those.
I just want to say that you guys are doing a heck of a job keeping it together. The times that I've been down to the, the library, it's, I've never gone down there where I, you know, I haven't looked around and seen people back and forth and looking at books and then kids running around, and I am a product of the library. I, I grew up, all of my Campbell kids grew up going to the library and watching movies on Saturdays and, you know, checking out so many books and competing to see who could read the most books in a matter of time, you know, and, and that, that did instill, you know, that and the fact that my dad read all the time, it did give me a love to, to read and to learn, so I, you know, I'm a, I'm a walking witness to, to that one. So I, I just encourage you, you guys, your team, your staff, and all the volunteers that have been doing a fantastic job at, the library's taking some hits, but I'll tell you, we, we definitely, we definitely need the library here in Burlington, it's been a tremendous asset, so I just want to throw that out there.
Thank you, and thank you for coming and, and reading to the kids in December, we always appreciate it.
It's fun, they don't throw tomatoes when I get down either, they're really sweet.
I, I do have a, okay, I do have a question, maybe more information for those listening and watching. We spoke a little bit about the students at SCC, how they can, I was hoping you could touch on that.
Yeah, absolutely. So we, we talked a bit about how there are certain communities that contract with us for service. One of the other ways that people use us is through the state's Open Access Program. And the Open Access Program is administered by the state library, and any community that has a library or contracts for service can participate. And each library chooses, pretty much every library in the state chooses to participate in open access. But what it allows is that, say, someone who lives in Burlington but works in Fort Madison can get a card in Fort Madison, because we have a library that we support, they have a library that they support, so we have this reciprocal kind of relationship. The same is true with libraries at the community colleges or universities that participate in it. And SCC participates in open access, and so students at SCC can come and get a card with us by showing their, their student ID and to show that they are a student in that particular semester. So we make their card good for a semester, and then the next semester, they just come back and show that they're still a student, and we'll just keep, we'll keep renewing it. So we do have quite a few students that we see particularly using our meeting rooms as a quiet place to study, but also checking out materials. And the reverse is true, and I think a lot of people don't know, that any resident of Burlington can go to SCC and, and use their library as well. So it is a reciprocal agreement.
That I didn't know.
Yeah, thank you for that.
I have a couple of things around it. I think the programs and all that you, you've put together have been tremendous, and I think we've seen a lot of growth in, in the programs in the past few years. I, I can see with your initiatives, some additional growth, and, but I, I don't know where the funds are going to come from, and I, I can see you living within the budget that you're, that you're proposing, but I'm seeing, if we continue this trend, that something, you're going to have to give something up, and it's much harder to take away than it is to give. And, and I, I would caution you in looking at all your programs and, and, and keeping those that do the most, do the best for the most, and, and be cautious about, about growing anymore. And, and the, the, you, you brought the comparison of 2002 to, to the present, and I know that when the, when it was decided to build the new facility, that one of the promises was that we were going to reduce the number of personnel, and we can see that the evidence is there, that's happened. And, and we've still seen growth in numbers, and that means that, to me, that means that the library is much more efficient than what the, what the old facility is, and, and I applaud you for keeping, for the, for you and the staff keeping that promise to the, to the people. But I'm, I'm seeing, I'm seeing a trend that's, that's, that's making me nervous, because it's, it's hard to take things away from, much harder to take it away than it is to give.
And I'm, I'm glad you said it, because when I was going through the presentation in my office, I remembered to say, but forgot to say here, that one of the things with the outreach efforts that we're doing, there is a balance that we have to really work on, because every time we send someone out to the middle schools to do a book talk, we send somebody out to participate in, you know, living windows, or whatever special event might be going on, that's one less person we have in, in the building. So we have to really make sure that we keep a balance and know that we have to keep up for staffing in the building and, you know, be able to, to go out. So, so that is something we're always looking at. One of the, the changes that we've made in the last year or so is, I, I mentioned, we do computer classes, we used to do quite a few computer classes, we used to get a lot of people. Numbers kind of started to go down a little bit more for that. So now we've changed, and we say, if we don't have four people at least signed up for that class, we're not going to have the class. Instead, we're going to invite that person to come in and sit down one-on-one with the staff member and talk about whatever their individual need is. So we do try to look at our program and see, okay, what is not getting the attendance it used to get, and where can we move some stuff around? I will say, I am, I am always amazed when, you know, we among staff will say, how, how is it that we're, people are getting all of this done? How are we finding time to get out and do some of these things? And, and yeah, it, so it is always on the top of my mind, that we don't want to grow too much where we can't do it all. Yeah. And, and in terms of funds for some of these programs, that's where I come back and say, we are so fortunate to have, like our friends, the library group, that I can go to and say, you know, we want to bring in speakers for our seniors program, that was one of mine today, we asked for six months' worth of speakers' fees, and, and they were able to step up and do that for us.
Friends.
Yeah, so we're, we're very fortunate to, to have that. But you're right, staff time is the, the one that we have to really be careful of.
Okay, thank you.
You mentioned that you were fortunate, happy, glad to be here.
Yes.
Reciprocal would be true, too, I think you do a good job, and we're glad that you're here, so.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you for bringing your family to Burlington.
No, thank you, I appreciate it.
I do have one more thing. I don't know, you talked about you had one intern?
Yes.
Um, what are the possibilities of possibly bringing more in? That can help, I would think, you know, counteract pulling a full-time staff or a part-time staff, and maybe an intern can do some of the activities. I don't know if that's.
Right, yeah, and we, we are, we're very open to doing, to doing that. I know we've, we've had in the past people from SCC who have worked with us. We, right now, we work with AARP as a senior job training program, and we have had someone for the last couple of years now who's worked with us. We have a newer person who just started this month, and so she helps us with different projects and things, and we have experienced works, another senior job training program. And so we, we do like to, to work with different organizations like that. So we're a training site, we can kind of be giving by giving them an opportunity to learn, but also they're helping us out to be able to do different projects, so that is a great opportunity.
A couple of things yet before we get out of here. One, the, well, we have about 10 minutes, so we can do that to go through the hotel, motel, and the local option sales tax usage, just to quickly review. It was in, it was included in your packets, but a note, too, with the library, the library is one of those functional areas that function, that works a little differently than the rest of the departments by state statute. We have control over their budget, essentially, how much funds we will provide to them, but they have their separate library board that gets to make their, their funding, or their decisions about what they're going to do with that funds, how they're going to run operations. Now, we are certainly, from the city's perspective, able to offer some suggestions based off of the funds, since we do provide funds to them, we can say, we strongly encourage you, if you want to continue to receive the funds, to do certain things, that's under their purview. And it's, it's a strange relationship, it's one of the areas that makes the, the functioning of a library a little bit different from most of the other areas within city government. Stephanie?
Okay, I'll talk fast. In your packet was some sheets regarding the hotel-motel tax funds, so I just thought we'd go over a little bit of the history and where the, where the money comes. Obviously, this year, we have $800,000 budgeted to come in for hotel-motel tax revenue, and we have an agreement that was in effect last year, too. We split this between the city and the convention and, and visitors bureau, where we take 30, or sorry, 70% of the money, and we give them 30% of those funds, up to $700,000, and then after, the, the money we And then after the, the money we collect over the seven hundred thousand dollars, we split that sixty forty. The city keeps sixty and CVB gets forty percent. And that's a resolution that was in effect.
It's a, we have that, this, I think, a three-year agreement, and we're in the partway through the first year of that right now. We implemented that last June, I think.
Yeah. So of the eight hundred thousand dollar revenues, we've budgeted seven hundred and seventy-one thousand one ninety-five for expenditures this year. And we break it down, those numbers at the beginning, the twenty-four oh one, we call that the activity. So we've, we've got seven activities that we use out of hotel motel. CVB, that's what's budgeted that they're going to get this year, two hundred and fifty thousand. We designate seventeen thousand to the auditorium. You can read through Riverfront Maintenance, forty-nine thousand. Twenty-four oh fours for our parks this year. We just have one expense budgeted there for the pool filter. Our culture assistance, we give to the Symphony and the Art Guild, and then the twenty-four oh seven is the community field utilities that we pay.
And I just want to point out, back on that twenty-four oh six with the, we do give to the Symphony and the Art, but we, we have in the past at times given to the Burlington Municipal Band. We used to fund that out of the general fund sometime before I got here. We have the account still in, in our books, but I don't, I've never seen any expenditures in it. Last year, we provided them three thousand towards their, their foundation requested, three thousand dollars towards building up, I think, building up an endowment for the, the band. They had sent in a request this year to continue funding, and I really debated whether to throw something in there or not. I did not include funding for them, just under the, the guys, I, we've cut so much, I struggle to add a new, ongoing expenditure commitment. If you all want to make a change to that thought, that's, that's certainly within the purview of the council. I just have a hard time when we, we've made so many cuts to take on a new funding commitment.
I didn't have a problem with Symphony, but what, what's the twelve thousand two hundred and fifty for the Art Guild? What is, what is that?
That's just support we provide to them.
It's been there for, I don't know, two thousand and ten?
I'd have to go back and, ever since I've been here, we provide that to them.
I remember that.
So then, we also have this twenty-four oh six activity where we, we kind of have the special projects, and that's where most of the funds that we budget out of hotel motel. So you, you know, you can see the laundry list of things that we have projected that we would like to expense through the special projects.
How many more years are we left on that last one?
The Hucks Harbor note?
I think three years. I might be wrong by a year, but that's, it's right in that range.
Does anybody have any questions on these? I mean, these we'll, we'll go over also, too, when we go to the CIP plan, and it's, this is just showing where the, the funding is coming from, so. Next, we can go over the sales, local sales, sorry, local option sales tax. We've got budgeted revenue of four point two million, which is a budget increase from last year of two hundred and six thousand one sixty-eight. We are budgeting expenses of the four, the four million one hundred and ninety-one thousand eight seventy-three. Local option sales tax is set, we have certain parameters we have to follow, such as fifty percent of it needs to go to property tax relief. So you see, the larger number is property tax relief, meaning we'll transfer it from the local option sales tax into the general fund. We also, under the local option sales tax ballot, committed to funding police officers and equipment.
What we, actually with the property tax relief, what we use that to offset, we have the ability to collect a lot more property taxes towards employee benefits than what we do. We do have an employee benefits levy, but it's significantly lower than what we could potentially be collecting the way the statute allows. This is really what is being offset here.
What's the Burlington Baseball Debt Refinance? What's the status of that?
I'd have to, I, I'll have to bring back. That's, that's a fairly new refinance. I think that's the twenty-eleven bond, so.
It goes through, I think, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three is the last payment on that, I think.
Yeah.
Do you remember if that's the same payment every year if the?
Uh, it's in that range.
It, it, the last couple of years it was less, but now we're starting to pay principal back on that bond, so it did jump up this year. I think last year was closer to the thirty-six thousand.
I can look that up here in a second.
Okay, and I have my budget book back there, so. I mean, there's Matt's fire equipment that he talked about earlier is getting expensed out of here.
When it comes to the, as you look at the different things with the Burlington Bs, the agreement that we did in two thousand and eleven, that what it set in there was a ten-year agreement, or did it go through twenty-twenty-three or just twenty-twenty-one? But we're committed to the items that are in there by agreement. We did, we did have a, one payment that they agreed to take off for two years, two years ago, that was, I think amounted to about five thousand a year or something like that when we were trying to find ways to balance a budget. The debt reservice, service, it's in seventy-one thousand this year, then it goes to, in the FY seventeen budget, then goes to eighty-eight thousand, ninety-five thousand, ninety-five thousand, and ninety-four thousand through twenty-twenty-one. And I'm not sure if it goes beyond that or not, because that's all the further out in budget.
Any questions on any of these? Then there's just another list. A lot of our parks equipment is getting budgeted out of here. This is where we budget GIS support for the county, yeah, but we transferred because the county bills us every quarter for their GIS. We support the engineering department from here. We have the trail, or Trail Phase One, Economic Development, CDGB Housing Match.
Yeah, and with the way the housing match and the housing demo goes, we've been doing twenty thou, twenty thousand a year. We've, to do the CDB, CDBG match of six thousand in, in FY seventeen and eighteen, we reduced what we were doing to housing demo by that corresponding six thousand. Essentially used part of our housing demo to cover that.
And so, this is funny, but we pay for grants that we get, like for the trails, we pay the sales tax out of the, out of the local option sales tax, we pay the sales tax on those?
Huh?
There's, they had, for the Flint Hills Trails, Phase One, Phase One A, Phase One B, has listed the, the money that we're getting from the grant, and the money that we're getting from outside investors or whatever, from somebody, and then the sales tax.
That means that it's, it's coming out of this fund to pay for it.
Yeah.
That's where the funding is coming from.
We're using a portion of local option sales tax dollars for our match, for our match to the project.
No, to pay it to the project.
To pay the sales tax. That's our, okay, that's our cut from out of the, that's our cut from out of the sales tax.
Is the Economic Development Fund the same as it was last year?
No, that was, I was looking to see, fifty-five thousand in the current year's budget. There was a request to increase that to, by twenty thousand a year, kind of as a suggestion from the Economic Development Committee, since we were committing twenty thousand a year over a period of seven years towards the potential
Grant.
match on the Salter School Rehab. And in the past, local option sales tax used to put about, well, five percent of revenues was going there, which was about two hundred thousand a year. This is trying to, this is kind of an effort to, that, it would be nice to get it built back, back up. We've built into the, we can make over a five-year period that seventy thousand level work along with the CIP items that we've listed to come out of local option sales tax over the next few years. So yes, there's an increase.
That's all I have for these.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You do also have the book, the printout for all the departments and the projects that they're looking at. We've kind of got, police is, has a fairly consistent list of CIP items that are in there. Fire has fairly consistent items that they have in there outside of the fire truck that they're looking to purchase in twenty-twenty. As we get into the presentations that you'll have next week, Eric and Steve will have the largest number of items that are incorporated into that CIP list. Don had, had several that were there, too. They're all covered out of, either for his CIP items, they are all covered over a five-year basis, either out of cash on hand, operating revenues, or doing a significant borrowing with repayments to be done, and again, repayments made out of operating revenues. One item, as you go through the, the list of items on the CIP that will be covered next week, Steve has one item that we had in there with three million dollars for Mount Pleasant Street Bridge rehab or replacement. We did receive word from the DOT that we've been approved for funding for the million dollars through their bridge replacement program. That's available to us this fall. We've adjusted how we'll work that project. What we'd like to do is to start engineering this summer and be able to be in a position to go out and start work on that next year. So we'll, we'll change how that's structured in the budget. But along with that, they were using a number that's several years old, and we've since this, over the last couple of months, been working with an engineer that does bridges, and we've been given a more realistic number, and it has sticker shock that goes with it.
It's not going to eat up that, all of it, is it?
What's that?
It's not going to eat up all that.
Oh, we'd already budgeted to have that million dollars on a three million dollar project. If you look in what's listed on the CIP, we're looking at funding our, the remainder of that with TIF funds, the two, other two million dollars to do this as a TIF project.